This representation has laid out in our last session. And before I'll be asking questions, considering that Mr. General has already taken the podium, may I request that he apprise the August body of the query with respect to the mining company who is operating within that jurisdiction?
Okay, yes, you have the floor now, Mr. General.
Yes, good afternoon, Vice. Good afternoon to all the board members and to all the unclues here. Respectfully apprising the honorable members of the Sangguyam Panlalawigan on the matters of mineral production sharing agreements of Australasia Link Mining Corporation and Hallmark Mining Corporation in Barangay Macambol, City of Mati. Background there. Australasia Link Mining Corporation, the mine site is in Sitio Magum, Barangay Macambol, Mati City, and in an area called Salingkumot. Commodity is nickel ore, nickel laterite ore. Works under Asiaticos Mining Corporation or AMCOR. Holding MPAC in Puhada Nickel Project of AMCOR. MPAC originally issued last January 8, 2004, June 8, 2004, with MPAC number 197-2004-11, also amended on December 4, 2015, covering an area of 5,000 hectares in Mati and Governor Heniroso. Australasia has a MOWA with Mandaya Tribal Council and has complied with the FPIC process. ECC was approved last October 10, 2014. Declaration of Mining Project feasibility was approved last January 25, 2016. Australasia operation use strip of counter-mining methods, not open pit and that their sites are outside protected areas, though concern exist over buffer zones and proximally to protected zones. But both Australasia and Hallmark operations have been criticized for being close to protected areas, including Mount Hamigitan and Puhada Bay. In 2023, Austral and Hallmark accepted a letter of intent from Nickel Asia Corporation to be their exclusive contractor, which included exploration, exploring the possibility of building a processing plant on the site. Unfortunately, the letter of intent was terminated in 2024 because the parties could not agree on the commercial terms of agreements. Expiration of MPAC is also 25 years from approval. Renewable on June 8, 2029. For Hallmark Mining Corporation, also under Asiaticos Mining Corporation or AMCOR, MPAC also originally issued on June 8, 2004, with MPAC number 196-2004-11, amended on December 4, 2015, covering an area of 4,999.71 hectares in Mati and San Isidro. Hallmark also has a MOWA with Mandaya Tribal Council and also complied with the FPIC process. ECC was approved on May 18, 2015. Declaration of Mining Project feasibility was also approved last January 25, 2016. Special tree cutting permit was issued on February 12, 2016. Also uses bench surface mining methods. Hallmark has relinquished some hectares to expand the Mount Hamigitan Wildlife Range Sanctuary. Has social development and management program in 2003. In 2023, Hallmark donated 500,000 to Durso to help students. Expiration of MPAC is also 25 years from approval. Renewable on June 8, 2029. MPAC renewal requires Sangguyam Panlalawigan endorsement together with ISB endorsement. Since mining has environmental impacts and social impacts covered by the Local Government Code and RA 2942, the Philippine Mining Act of 1995, initial term is 25. It may be renewed once for another 25 years, subject to the terms and conditions. The maximum term, total term, is 50 years, unless modified by mutual consent of the government and the contractor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Honorable Lepardo.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Before I be asking questions to Sir Derbert, may I request that, considering that he's already here, Engineer Dumadag, to present to the Sangguyam Panlalawigan the reported incident over a provincial road as already discussed by this representation in our last meeting. For purposes of, Engineer Dumadag was staring at me. I'm not sure if he was made aware of the request of the Sangguyam Panlalawigan. Tenerate, Honorable Presiding Officer, if I may be allowed to address Engineer Dumadag? May I be?
Yes, you may. Anyway, we are on suspended rules.
Thank you. Engineer, during our last session, I made a manifestation here on other matters that we, this representation has received reports of a provincial road that would traverse Macambol and Barangay Kabuaya, leading towards the barangay Lavigan of the municipality of Governor Heniroso. Where on orders of our governor that we rehabilitate this provincial road, we were not allowed entry by the mining company who is operating within that territorial jurisdiction. And may I know from you, Engineer Dumadag, what is the truth behind all of this?
Okay.
First of all, good afternoon, everyone, to the honorable members of this August body. And by the way, we have to apprise for this August body the chronological events, but my technical staff still late, still on the arriving stage. But however, I will answer with regards to the query on the non-entry of our technical personnel in the mining area. It was started that in 2003, based on evidence of resolution, the Barangay Macambol want to convert these local roads to provincial roads. And in 2006, or 2005 and 2006, the then former governor Maria Liliatipal Mahil had a project contract of this particular road section, the Macambol-Magum Road, for purposes of opening for eventual conversion to provincial road. However, in the incumbency of late Governor, Governor Corazon Malanyon, the project was halted due to some technical consideration within the contracts. And in my recollection, it was reviewed and had some sort of validation on the ground that the contract should not be continued due to some elements of contract clarification. Then in 2016, in the incumbency of, the first incumbency of Honorable Governor Nelson Dayang Hirang, there was a marching order to continue the roadworks operation in the Macambol going to Kabuaya Road in order to pass through these 36 kilometers local roads going to Kabuaya, Luban, and Lanka. And in our desire to be funded under the outsourced funds of the national government, it was that time that there is an amount of 550 million from the DPWH implementing funds that continue the construction of Magum Section and the Kabuaya Section, including the Lanka-Luban rehabilitation. Now, in the second incumbency of our Governor Nelson Dayang Hirang, is another marching order to continue the opening of incomplete road section. In order to clarify things in the technical cost estimates, we want to expedite the survey by means of a drone reconnaissance survey. In our permission in the mining corporation, they are acknowledging that we are allowed to flown in the vicinity. But however, in the actual site condition, our technical personnel will refuse to enter into the area for purposes of drone survey. Now, it was difficult for us to conduct details and it was difficult for us to finalize our plans, design, much more programming because lack of data and facts gathered based on topography situation. Now, on our desire to have some alternate method in the survey, we use the route survey method to determine the unaccomplished section. Out of 36 kilometers, the provincial government invested in opening the 16 kilometers. And the remaining 20 kilometers is now on the way. Since July or about September, we commenced at Kabuaya Section and we dispatch our equipment at Macambol Section. However, in Macambol Section, we are again barred by the mining operation to conduct our work continuation in the remaining section due to some reasons that beyond our understanding. They have series of letters, we have series of reply letters to them, and maybe our technical team will present on the PowerPoint presentation for proper understanding of what really happened and transpired within that road section that might be we are connecting the circumferential loop from the one going National Highway Junction, the one, Macambol, Kabuaya, and going to Lanka-Luban, Lanka-Busabuso, Pundagitan, going to National Highway Junction, Manikling. And for this reason, we are so eager to proceed the construction of the road because it is vital to our economic activity. Most especially, we can have a provincial tourism road link going to Barangay, Kabuaya, and Macambol, which is part of Mati, but they could not pass through within the road linking Mati. So, the pronouncement of the governor to link the Lanka-Luban-Kabuaya through Macambol is a marching order, but it's a public knowledge that Lanka-Luban-Kabuaya is a JDA barangais that traversing the route if they are going to Mati, Bia, Gobjen, and San Isidro. So, if we are ready now? So, to for proper understanding, because there is some technicalities that the PO is the one who only knowledgeable. And to our honorable members of this August body, it's now high time to be aware of the situation that we proceed the activity in 2017 before the mining operation is in full blast operation. So, this is our briefer. So, slide please. Pretty one. Zoom gamay. Sige, proceed na ta. Anyway, we ask for some indulgence with the readable content. The, for proper understanding, the provincial road name National Highway Junction from the one to Magum is a 24-kilometer road section. It has a road ID labeled by DILG. And this boundary from the one to Magum is classified as provincial road. In the Magum to Kabuaya Section, which are commenced by the province with a contract by admin implementation in opening the road section, is not yet converted to provincial road. It is an all-weather local road. Now, along Manikling, National Highway Junction, Manikling to Pundagitan, is formerly a 42-kilometer provincial road, but converted to national highway due to reasons of tourism going to Cape San Agustin at Lavigan. The road classification which are missing here is Lanka-Luban-Kabuaya, which are now considered an all-weather local road, funded by national government on the rehab and improvement. And it was not yet classified as national highway. Until now, it was not converted as provincial road. If we simulate, this is the circumferential roadmap. The yellow section is the road link from the one, Manikling, to Lavigan. In Lavigan, there is a Busabuso section. So, we will start going to Lanka-Luban-Kabuaya, the red line. Yeah, the red line, which is now not yet converted to provincial road or either a national secondary road. The green one is the road opening of the provincial government, which is going to Magum to Masan Road, which is not yet converted to provincial road with a road length of 16 kilometers. The missing link here is the blue one, which is a railroad about 20 kilometers, which is subject for our opening because there is already a funds from National Executive Program from the Congressional Office, which allotment requires equity of the province to open the road prior to improvement and construction. So, if we traverse from Lanka to if we traverse from Lanka going to Abia-Macambol, going to Mati, it will take only one hour. If we are from Lanka going to Mati-Bia-Gobjen, it will take us three hours. That is our simulation. Yeah, it's our simulation. So, it means to say it is imperative that Lanka-Luban is part of Mati. It should be traversed through the territorial road within Mati Road Section. So that is now the placement of our circumferential road and the road involving now the non-entry of the mining corporation of the technical people of the PO to conduct drone survey for their reason of alignment with their program because they have their own provincial roadmap. Thank you.
Thank you, Engineer Dumadag. Engineer, I'll start with you. I'll take off from what you said. Did I hear you correctly that this mining company is operating there also has its own provincial roadmap?
Based on their communication transmitted to the office, do you want a harmonization meeting with the technical people in the office to present their provincial tourism map according to their letter?
Their intention is to present their provincial tourism map? Map? Remind me again, why are they there? Are they for mining or are they governing the area? For purposes of the function of the local government unit?
Yes, Your Honor, that is now the reckoning of my permission to the honorable governor if I allow myself to meet with them.
Okay. Now, in that incident where you were not allowed entry, you said that you used gadget drones to take a look at that particular portion where ang intention ninyo is maga rehabta sa provincial road.
Yes, Your Honor. The point of discussion here is at Magum Section is a point zero of a new road opened by the provincial government.
Okay. Is there already a local road that is existing?
In the 16-kilometer streets, there was a portion distorted by the mining operation.
When you say distorted, it was intentionally done?
I could, I did not see on the ground, but based on the reports of my technical people, it could only be possible it will be restored with a graveling.
All right. Now, when you were not allowed entry, ipaluparanin yung drone, did you again ask them? Or even the assistance of the barangay there, Barangay Macambol? By telling them that this is the intention of the province? Because from what I've heard, the office of Congressman Almario has allocated a funding that would be approved in the GA for 2026. And the contribution of the province is to make sure that this provincial road is rehabilitated or can be accessed by the DPWH through its contractor.
Before we proceed the dispatch of our heavy equipment, we seek the assistance of the barangay officials, much more, I called the barangay captain. And their reply is so positive.
Positive?
Yeah.
And if their reply is positive, why were you negatively not allowed to enter?
That is now our questioning in the ground. If we can talk them verbally and contact in a means of communication, it's okay to pass through the area. But during the actual occurrence of the spots of the equipment, they will halt by the security guards of the mining corporation.
Remind me again, Engineer Dumadag, is this the same barangay who passed a resolution? Under that, I think you said 2003, requesting the province that we convert this local road into a provincial road?
Yes.
And it is the same barangay who refused, who said that you can go inside, but when you were already in the ground, you were refused. Did I hear you correctly by the mining company through its agents?
Yes, Your Honor. The barangay Macambol passed a resolution under then Captain Ching. And in the incumbency of Captain Salazar, there is no resistance. In fact, they are cooperating with us. Only the mining corporation give us communication and actual occurrence of did not allowing us to fly a drone and to pass our heavy equipment going to the portion where we want to conduct our roadworks operation.
Right. Now, Engineer,
On the Kabuaya Section, still continuation and ongoing among accomplishment in opening the railroad. In Macambol Section, we hold the activity because lately, they wrote us a letter through a lawyer. They want us to submit our plans of route survey for their whatever purpose of harmonization and understanding.
So the other way of saying it is All right. Engineer, dagang salamat. Honorable Presiding Officer, as I would resume later on my functions as a member of this Sangguyam Panlalawigan and under the Committee on Environment, I would like that this be referred to in that committee. This is an opportunity na dapat dilin na'to mamis. If there is a support coming from the Congressional Office of Congressman Chino Almario, kay para manis kaayuhan sa katawan sa Mati o sa Dava Oriental. Is that okay with you, Engineer Dumadag? Invite ka na mo balik?
We are so willing and at same time, we submit our due share of information to further understand this situation on Macambol-Kabuaya Road Section.
Thank you, Engineer Dumadag. Thank you.
Thank you to both our resource persons. Considering that the August body has already been briefed as to the background of, do you have other further questions?
Mr. Derbert, General.
Okay. You may still proceed with the next guest.
May I be allowed?
Yes.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I'll make it quick. I know Madam Presiding Officer, you would like to go to Karaganong. Sir Derbert, akong iklaro ha, ang nag-operate din ng minahan, Hallmark and Australasia.
Which is under the umbrella of AMCOR?
You mean Asiaticos Management Corporation or AMCOR takes the
Top management.
Top management. A separate corporation than that of the Hallmark and Australasia. Now, did I hear you correctly that their 25
Years.
Year tenement would end by 2029?
Yes.
Now, Engineer, being the end row or being in the office being the end row or being in the office of the end row, gusto kong makasabot bisag kadali lang. Pwede babuhaton sa minahan, sa mining company nga pugnan ang gobyerno nga magbuhat o usaka development sa usakan lugar, particularly in this case, kaning karsada that would benefit ang atong mga igsoon nga taga Mati, nga gikan sa Macambol. Ganina sagi ingon ni Engineer Dumadag, kung kanay mo agihan, maabot ka o langka by one hour from Mati. Kung dito kasloyo mo agi, passing through Governor Heniroso, maabot o tulok auras. As far as you know, pwede babuhaton sa usaka mining company nga pugnan niya ang pananglitan ang probinsya, nga musulod sa usaka area nga nasulod sa probinsya po'd para magdaog serbisyon sa mas karsada? As far as you know?
Yes, Attorney, bago lang po'd binagkan da kong marpsi dito sa MGB Davao, na-discuss po na nga mo problema. Actually, kanang mangangangangang situation, diligid dapat pugnan kay with inman sila sa territorial jurisdiction sa province of Dava Oriental. But nagkapadayon among discussion dito na brought out through discussion nga during the time of Governor Maria Elena Palma Hill, there was a MOA
Yes.
signed by NCIP, the province of Dava Oriental, and the mining company.
If I may have to cut you, that is covered by Resolution Number Five, Series of Two Thousand Seven, authored by then Board Member Nelson Eldayang Hirang, sponsored by then Board Member Delphine Miones. It covered that MOA wherein, including that mining company, already allowed including the stakeholders there, katong mga IPs, barangay, nakasinabot ng ibutangyo na'to ang provincial road. In fact, we already identified that portion as part of the provincial road. Siguro na alay portion nga wala, maabrihan pa na'to. Now, may I have a direct answer? Pwede ba silang mamugong na'to kung pananglitan?
Actually, wala, may balawad yun nga nag-ingon nga pugnan. Diligid. Kaso lang, naoverheard lang ako sa company na it's very hard for them daw kung dito pa ang agion ang ang provincial road nga while nagmina po'd sila, so magkaroon yun o problema.
Okay, speaking of their mining, Sir Derbert, the location, as you have said earlier, is within the buffer zone of Mount Hamigitan? Am I correct?
Yes po, labas po ang, yes.
And Mount Hamigitan is already declared as a World UNESCO Heritage. Am I correct?
Yes po.
And it might take a lifetime of a certain country or a province just so that a particular scenery or a location be declared as a world heritage. In fact, posible ka na nga dilig paka ma-declare as world heritage, no? Tama ba ko? Now, did I also hear you correctly that ang ilahang operations later on posibleng mo i-go sa Puada Bay, which is also labeled as one of the beautiful base in the world, correct ba?
Pwede maging maapektuhan if the operations dilig yun masubay sa insakto ang proseso.
How is that so? Ngang Puada Bay naanaman dery palook? Nganong makaingon man ta nga ang ilahang operations basig sa ngatong ngatong makaapektuh sa atong Puada Bay?
Sa Konggingon Board nga if ever nga dilig ma-malice ang insakto ang operation, posible nga makatagyo ka daw sa ato ang Puada Bay. But naamanggo'y papilis po nila, kanang ginatawag na'to IP-IP, Environmental Protection Enhancement Program, ginaaply yun po na nila.
Kanang IP-IP nila, maoragiha po na ang IP-IPing makita na'to sa Surigao, no? Kanang mga company po sa Surigao nga ang ilang dagat na?
Siguro na-enhance po nila, kay nakita nila tong Surigao nga medyo problemado yun.
Asay gi-enhance nila ang color sa dagat? At any rate, it will, according to what you said, later on, posible makaapektuh siya sa ato ang beautiful bay, the Puada?
That's the function of the MMT, multi-partite monitoring thing.
Alright. Anyway, wa, naman na sa tuang jurisdiction kay dito naman akang MGB, no? And there is also one bay there nga posibleng maapektuhan. Because we're thinking nga kung pananglitan o isang pag-usaon nyo pagbutang sa imuhang measures diha that would mitigate it, kung maigo yun kag dako kayong tubig, wala may laing bitbita na, padong maginas dagat. Posible mo abot pa din na dito sa tubangan sa among lugar sa Mayo. And Mayo Bay is also a is it also a protected?
Yes. Yeah.
Now, engineer, I will not, Sir Derbert, I will not ask questions anything more about this, but go directly sa ilang operations. As far as you know, naka-operate na ba sila?
Yes.
Pagawas na sila o?
Yes, as per record, Board, they already shipped that seventy-nine, seventy-eight visa.
Now, kanang magship out sila sa atua nganhe sa probinsya? Ang sabay patakaran, na ba sila bayronon nga fees or buhis sa probinsya?
Board, ako lang sang i-diver, ako ihatag sa ato ang Assistant Endro nga si Aguy nagtutoke when it comes to taxation.
You're referring to Sir Janed Fernandez? Thank you. Sir Jan, I have the same question, if that's okay. Sir, paspasan lang na ako gamay sir, kay basig di nagyugkuhanin nila. Lahe nagugig tinanawan si Elijah na ako, sir.
Yes, Board, good afternoon, good afternoon to all. What is the question, Board?
The question is, nagship out na sila o nickel, no? Ang ilahang ore?
Yes, nickel latherite ore.
Nickel latherite ore?
Yes, Board.
There were already seventy-eight shipments. Na ba sila ginabayran ani sa tua, regulation by way of a provincial ordinance?
Yes, Board, sa first pa lang, sa first shipment nila on June 2019, during the first governorship of Gov. Nelson, nagbasta sa revenue code ang provincial ordinance na'to, nakabayan sila sa isaka boatload of 1.2 million.
1.2 million, alright.
After that, wala?
That boatload, I'm sorry, Sir Jan, ha? Pilak ka metric tons ang sulod atong isaka load?
More or less na sa fifty-four thousand metric tons.
And the computation, by the way, is how do you compute, compilay bayronon nila sa probinsya?
That time, Board, is based fair market value at ten percent. We collected the extraction fee based buying per metric ton. We convert namang dollars to the existing peso rate. Then, we collectahan po namo siya corresponding conservation and protection fee. Mananing abot o 1.2 million.
Ang ilang bayronon?
Ang conservation protection fee, mabilin sa province, ang extraction fee lang ang madownload na'to sa corresponding barangayso.
Municipality.
Municipality.
Ang basis na'to is the provincial ordinance nga gibuhat aning Sanggoyan Palalawigan.
Yes.
Alright. Now, there were seventy-eight boatloads. What happened to the other seventy-seven boatloads?
I know, the, ang pagbilang sa one, first to seventy-eight is during the time of the previous administration.
Yeah, ang, ang first nimo, according to you, ang unang boatload, they were they paid the province 1.2 million?
Yes, correct.
Ang ikaduha, ikatulo, pila naman lagibayran nila, 1.2?
So, during the term of the previous administration, the second to seventy-nine shipments, wala nagibasihan ang revenue code.
And why is that?
Because nag ano naman, nagprotest naman ang Hallmark na excessive daw ang ang collection sa province, so nagresult sila sa compromise agreement.
Compromise with who? With the province?
With the province, provincial government and the mining company.
Now, was there an amendment to that provincial ordinance?
Ongoing ang revision, Karun Board.
So as far as your office is concerned, kaya nakita nga na'y amendment na ang provincial ordinance?
There was no amendment.
And yet, the previous administration made a compromise with the mining company?
The administration of the of Governor Nelson, Dayang Hirang.
And then, what happened to the compromise? How much was they able to pay?
It was applied, Board, based on the assay grade of every shipment. So there is a corresponding value per shipment, a fixed value. So, it was agreed on April 12, 2019.
And where this agreement was made?
I do not know, maybe in Manila.
Okay.
Then, the regulatory fee as a fixed rate based on the assay grade, so usually ang shipment of the mining company is 1.2% ang assay grade to less than 1.5 to 1.2, so nafix ang regulatory rate at 100,000 pesos per boatload.
Per boatload?
Yes.
Wow. From 1.2 million per boatload?
100,000 na lang.
100,000 na lang?
Compromise agreement.
Unya, ang magbutang tag karsada, dito nila pasudlon. Okay po'd. Alright. You said that there is an ongoing revision, Sir Ed. Can we later on sit and discuss this one? So that we'll be able to take a look at that revision and, of course, ato pong liilion kung angayan ba nga ato running ibutang sila o kada usaka barko nga igawas nila, mubayad lang sila sa probinsya o 100,000?
Yes, Board.
Kay kung nibayad sila 1.2, layo rapo'd siguro magcompromise, muretso't 100,000? I'm just saying my piece, Sir Ed. At any rate, are you okay po'd ba ka? I will invite you later on ang imong opisina, in the Committee on Environment and discuss this and take a look at the actions of this mining company in disallowing the province to make the necessary rehabilitation of that local road, Sir Janed, is that okay with you?
Yes, Board, yes, Board. Actually, let me, allow me to say something, no? With regards sa revision ng revenue code, we have to include because the revenue code is flawed, we have to include the large-scale mining collection for extraction fee, so we have to put there the five percent extraction fee. Then, so I go with the revision of the revenue code. And the second is to negotiate with the mining company for the amendment of the compromise agreement. So, we have to increase the regulatory fixed fee, 100,000 pesos per boatload per shipment depending on the assay grade, so kung ma-amend, mag-sit down, mag-negotiate with the mining company, so that will be, yung pag-increase, that will be our basis for the collection of other mining companies like Riverbend in Banay-Banay, also nickel latherite, and the, hopefully, mag-operate ang Zetosa Mining, also in Banay-Banay. The commodity is also nickel latherite. So, first, Board, is revise the revenue code and/or negotiate again with the mining company to increase the regulatory fixed fee per shipment, which is 100,000 per boatload, dapat mag-increase, yeah?
Alright.
While ongoing ang revision.
Yeah, thank you, Sir Jan. As far as whether that provincial ordinance is flawed, I will take exception, being the August body, but we'll take a look at it, on whether or not it is indeed in need of a revision. But meantime, I welcome the gesture that you are willing to sit on that. Napakailaeng gustong idugang, Sir Jan. Finally, aside ni Macambol, asa pa nganhe sa ato ang probinsya ang na'y operation of mining, sir?
Ang Riverbend of Banay-Banay, they have already ship out eleven boatloads, but they still on stoppage of their operation, then eventually, ang Zetosa Mining, also in Banay-Banay, signed na ang MPSA nila, so they are just working it out with their with their contractor.
So there are three in district two?
There are three.
How about in our district, in District One?
There is only one mining company there, but it's small-scale mining under the Miniham Bayan.
Miniham Bayan, and it is located?
The RD 5M in Sitio Napo, barangay Kaatihan, of Boston.
Boston. Now, last na lang, we receive reports nga in the mountains of Karaga as well as in Manay, dun na'y mga nagmina-mina. Are you aware of this one?
We received no reports with regards to that one.
Siguro magpatutlo mo niya ni IPMR Board, Terryo? Kay kabisado kay nila ng mga kabukiran sa ato ang mga IPs, kung kinisab mo'y naglihok-lihok dito. At any rate, I'm already through, thank you kayo, Sir Jan.
Excuse me, Board, one last time. We already collected the, ano, the second to seventy-eight shipments at 100,000 pesos.
You, the province already collected the 100,000?
First, first is January, the first collection was on January 15, 2024, at 1.6 million, meaning sixteen boatloads. The next shipment, November 28, 2024, 3.1 million, meaning thirty-one boatloads, and present last September 2025, September 12, 2025, we collected thirty-one shipments at 3.1 million.
Alright. Okay, thank you for that information, Sir Janed.
Thank you, yes, are we through with the questions?
I am already through, and I don't know, I am a resource person. But if you will just allow me, may I request that subsequently, as you as the Sanggoyan proceeds with its session, this matter be referred to the appropriate committee, and I will just provide later on the personalities that are to be invited in that committee hearing, Honorable Presiding Officer, if you will allow it.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Lepardo. I believe our information has already been provided to all the members of the council. May we request for the information if that can be provided, SP Support Office, the presentation earlier, and also the other information that was also, ano, was given earlier. So this matter that we discussed is referred to the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources, so that it can be tackled in detail during the committee hearing with the invited resource persons, and when the committee report is reported here, to make sure that all the details that needs to be put on the report shall be shall be provided to all the members, okay, so, yes?
There is a request for revision of an existing provincial ordinance that deals with the collection of this fees.
Yes, I believe also, even without this coming up in the discussion, there were already instructions, I believe, from the Executive Department to review and revisit the revenue code of the province, so we are on the process, I guess, of doing that, and that is as soon as the Executive Department has already come up with the final proposals, that will definitely be forwarded to the Sanggoyan.
If it is okay with the Honorable Board Ravelo, the disposal of this be made to the two committees on environment as well as the finance budget and appropriation?
Okay, so this will be jointly referred, okay, this matter, specifically on the revenue code revision to the committee on finance budget and appropriation, so since we are through, are we already through with our guests for today? Are there any questions coming from the members? None? So, we are now through with all our guests, we can now proceed with all the items in the order of business. May we request Honorable Makaira for the motion for the lifting of the suspension of the house rules?
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, may I make an omnibus motion? First, I would like to move that our resource person be excused. And also, I would like to move for the lifting of the suspension of the rules.
Okay, there were two motions presented by Honorable Makaira. Uh, any second to the motion, seconded by all members present, any objections? Discussions, non-noted, motions are carried. We are now back to our regular session, what is the next item?
Our next item is first read, first reading and referral committees. We have here a proposed resolutions.
Before we move, may we request again, uh, Honorable Makaira was raising her hand?
Yes, uh, yes, Madam Presiding Officer, before that, I would like to move, uh, because, uh, the Office of the Sangguyang Palalawigan Support Services, she serves, uh, received several communications, um, communication number 18128-2025, 18-129-2025, 18-130-2025, and 18-131-2025. I move, uh, Madam Presiding Officer, that these communications be tackled later during the, uh, unassigned business under suspended rules.
Okay, uh, for the additional communications, there were four or five? There are five communications, two of which are certified urgent, I believe? Two of which, so the two measures, two communications certified urgent will be tackled under unassigned business suspended house rules. And for the rest, it will be included in the business for the day, uh, for first reading and referral to the committees, okay? Mrs. Secretary, please take note. And if, uh, if there is no objection from the members, the Chair would like to make a request that, uh, when we take up the first reading or the communications, if we can just dispense with the, uh, reading in total of the contents of the communication and directly, uh, I will, the Chair would just like to directly refer it to the committees, if that would be okay? So if there's no objection, we can proceed now. Uh, Mrs. Secretary, I would just proceed with the referral for... Oh, yes, I think we still under proposed resolutions.
Yes, uh.
We have, you may proceed first.
We have here a proposed resolution number 18-29-2025 authored by Honorable Rotse M. Ravelo.
Okay, this is referred to the Committee on Peace and Order and Public Safety?
Proposed resolution number 18-112-2025 authored by Honorable Rotse M. Ravelo.
Okay, I refer to Committee, uh, Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation Ways and Means.
And the third one is a proposed resolution number 18-113-2025 authored by Honorable Maria Glenda Monet Trapat Gaita.
Finance Budget and Appropriation Ways and Means.
Our next item is, uh, communications. First is a communication number 18-116-2025.
Committee on Cooperative, Committee on Cooperative.
Communication number 18-117-2025.
This is for the information of the August body.
Communication number 18-118-2025.
Committee on, uh, Public Information, Communication Technology and Media Affairs.
Communication number, uh, 18-119-2025.
Committee on Education.
Communication number 18-120-2025.
Committee on Health and Sanitation.
Communication number 18-121-2025.
Committee on Health and Sanitation.
Communication number 18-12-2025.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
Communication number 18-123-2025.
This is certified urgent by the Honorable Governor. This is referred to the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation and will be discussed later under unassigned business suspended house rules.
Communication number 18-124-2025.
Um, this is referred to Committee on Labor and Employment.
Communication number 18-125-2025.
Okay, this is certified again urgent by the Honorable Governor, referred to Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation and Ways and Means and to be later discussed, uh, under unassigned business suspended house rules.
Communication number 18-126-2025.
This is also certified urgent by the Honorable Governor and referred to the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation Ways and Means and to be discussed later under unassigned business suspended house rules.
Communication number 18-127-2025.
Again, certified urgent by the Honorable Governor, and this will be referred to Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation and Ways and Means and to be discussed later under unassigned business suspended house rules.
Communication number 18-128-2025.
This is referred to Committee on Health and Sanitation.
Communication number 18-129-2025.
Referred to Committee on Education.
Communication number 18-130-2025.
This is referred to Committee on Tourism.
Communication number 18-131-2025.
Okay, this is certified urgent by the LC, uh, by the Local Chief Executive and referred to Committee on Environment and Natural Resources.
Communication number 18-132-2025.
Uh, this is also certified urgent by the Honorable Governor, referred to Committee on Education and to be tackled later under unassigned business suspended house rules. So with the earlier communication certified urgent, communication 18-131-2025. Please take note, the Vice Chair of the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources. You may proceed to the next item. Yes, Honorable Montez?
Uh, thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I would like to, uh, this representation would like to manifest the inclusion of committee report number 18-66-2025 along with its corresponding proposed resolution number 18-114-2025 under the Committee on Labor, Employment, Civil Service, and Human Resource Development. I also move, Madam Chair.
Okay, there is a request, a motion by Honorable Montez, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Please take note, uh, Mr. Secretary, committee report number 66, 1866-2025 is included in the order of business. You may proceed for the committee reports. The fir- yes, first committee report?
Oh, yeah, uh, first committee report number 18-62-2025 by Committee on Local Government.
Committee on Local Government, uh, will be, the committee report will be reported by Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, may I have on satanan? This representation would like to render committee report number 18-62-2025. This is regarding communication number 18-101, an ordinance establishing the official logo of the Sangguyang Bayan and as an institution in the local government unit of the municipality of Manay Dava Oriental. And communication number 18-111-2025, an ordinance adopting the official logo of the Sangguyang Bayan of the municipality of San Isidro. I believe, Madam Presiding Officer, all members were given copies of the said, uh, committee report. I move to dispense the reading and subsequent, subsequently move for its adoption. I so move, Madam Presiding Officer.
There is a motion for the adoption of committee report number 18-62-2025 on motion of Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang, seconded by all members present, any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Committee report 18-62-2025 is hereby adopted by this council. Next item?
Uh, committee report number 18-63-2025 by Committee on Games and Amusement.
Honorable Elijah Palma Hill, you are recognized.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, uh, good evening, uh, good afternoon to each and everyone. This representation would like to render committee report number 18-63-2025 with the subject communication number, uh, 18-108-2025. Refer to the letter from the Honorable Governor Nelson Dayang Hirang dated September 12, requesting for the passage of resolution authorizing him to enter into a deed of use of rock for the use of our real property within the, uh, Capitol Hills, uh, authorizing the Philippine Charity Sweepstakes Office. Uh, I believe everybody has a copy of this committee report. Therefore, Honorable Presiding Officer, I would like to move to dispense the reading and the whole contents of this report, I subsequently move, I do so move.
Okay, there was a motion for the adoption of committee report number 18-63-2025 on motion of Honorable Elijah Palma Hill, seconded by all present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Committee report number 18-63-2025 is hereby adopted by this council. Next item?
Committee report number 18-64-2025 by Committee on Social Services.
Okay, Honorable, uh, Montoho is recognized.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, I have here a committee report number 18-64-2025 uh, by the Committee on Social Services. It is regarding communication number 18-35-2025. And I believe, uh, everyone here has a copy of the committee report. Therefore, I would, uh, like to, um, um, move that we, uh, adopt this, uh, said, uh, committee report, Madam Chair.
There is a motion for the adoption of committee report number 18-64-2025 on motion of Honorable Don Montoho, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Committee report number 18-64-2025 is hereby adopted by this council. Next committee report?
Committee report number 18-66-2025.
Honorable Montez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, I have here committee report number 18-66-2025 filed by the Committee on Labor, Employment, Civil Service, and Human Resource Development dated October 1, 2025, with communication number 18-106-2025. It is a letter from Ms. Christine M. Borgos, Administrative Officer 3 of the Sangguyang Bayan of Karaga, Dava Oriental, dated September 14, 2025, transmitting municipal ordinance number 01A Series of 2025 entitled "An Ordinance Creating Two Additional Plantilia Positions" of the Municipal Government of Karaga, Dava Oriental, under the Office of the Municipal Accountant, defining its qualification standards, determining their duties and functions, and providing funds thereof. Action taken, the committee held a meeting at the office of this representation to confirm matters pertaining to above-subject referred communications, present this representations, and the rest of the members of the committee. Madam Chair, considering that copies of this committee report has already been distributed earlier, now I would like to move to dispense the reading of this committee report number 18-66-2025 and subsequently move for the adoption of the same.
Okay, there is, there is a motion for the adoption of committee report number 18-66-2025 on motion of Honorable Harold Montez, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Committee report number 18-66-2025 is hereby adopted by this council. Next item?
Next item, calendar of business, uh, under business for the day, here are two proposed resolutions authored by Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang, enabling, uh, proposed resolution number 18-100-18-101, all series of 2025.
Okay, Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang, you are recognized.
Madam Presiding Officer, on behalf of the members of the Committee on Local Government, I now move for the passage of a resolution confirming the validity of the municipal ordinance number 2025-21-03 of the Sangguyang Bayan of Manay, Dava Oriental, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing the Official Logo of the Sangguyang Bayan as an Institution in the Local Government Unit of the Municipality of Manay, Dava Oriental", considering that the same is within the prescribed powers of the Sangguyang Bayan pursuant to Section 22B of the Local Government Code of 1991, I so move, Madam Presiding Officer.
There is a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-100-2025 on motion of Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang, seconded by all members present, any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Said resolution is hereby approved by this council, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, also product of committee report number 18-62. I now move for the passage of a resolution confirming the validity of the municipal ordinance number 336-18-2025 of the Sangguyang Bayan of San Isidro, Dava Oriental, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing and Adapting the Official Logo of the Sangguyang Bayan of the Municipality of San Isidro, Dava Oriental", considering that the same is within the prescribed powers of the Sangguyang Bayan pursuant to Section 22B of the Local Government Code of 1991, I so move, Madam Presiding Officer.
There is a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-101-2025 on motion of Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Said resolution is hereby approved by this council. Next item?
Next item is proposed resolution number 18-102-2025. The author and sponsor, Honorable Elijah E. Palma Hill.
Honorable Elijah Palma Hill, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Uh, I now move for the passage and approval of the proposal, proposed resolution number 18-102-2025, a resolution granting the authority of two Honorable Nelson Dayang Hirang, Provincial Governor, and for in behalf of the Province of Dava Oriental to enter into a deed of use of rock for the use of real property with it, with the Philippine Charity Sweepstakes Office, or PCSO, represented by its Assistant General Manager for game, for gaming, product development, and marketing sector, Attorney Liza Grace S. Pagano, particularly the newly constructed building located at the former Penro Office of the Ca- uh, in the Capitol Hills, barangay central, City of Mathi, Dava Oriental. I do so move, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Okay, there was a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-102-2025. Oh, 103, uh, 102, yes. 18-102-2025 on motion of Honorable Elijah Palma Hill, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Said resolution is hereby approved by this council. Next item?
Next item is proposed resolution number 18-103-2025. The author and sponsor, Honorable John Erwin G. Montoho.
Honorable Montoho, you are recognized.
Uh, Madam Presiding Officer, I have here a proposed resolution number 18-103-2025, a resolution authorizing the Provincial Governor, the Honorable Nelson El. Dayang Hirang, for and in behalf of the Provincial Government of Dava Oriental to enter into and, uh, a data-sharing agreement institutionalizing the solo-parent monitoring system with the Department of Social Welfare and Development, Field Office 11, represented by its Under-Secretary for Policy and Plans Group, Attorney Adonis P. Sulit, C- CSO 2. I move for the passage and approval of this, uh, proposed resolution, uh, Mr. Madam Chair.
There was a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-103-2025 on motion of Honorable John Erwin Montoho, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried.
Next item is proposed resolution number 18-104-2025. Author and sponsor, Honorable John Erwin G. Montoho.
Honorable John Erwin Montoho, you are can recognize.
Madam Presiding Officer, I have here a proposed resolution 18-104-2025, a resolution authorizing the Provincial Governor, Honorable Nelson El. Dayang Hirang, for and in behalf of the Provincial Government of Dava Oriental, to sign a deed of donation and acceptance with the Department of Social Welfare and Development, Field Office 11, represented by its Regional Director, Ruelo Di Arananas, Aradanas, PhD, for the transfer of 100,000 pesos as an annual aid subsidy which will be used, uh, which will be used for the administration and operational needs, including the purchase of services and procurement of essential equipment for DSWD, home for the agent. I, uh, move for the passage and approval of this, uh, said, uh, resolution, Madam Chair.
Okay, there was a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-104-2025 on motion of Honorable John Erwin Montoho, seconded by all members present, any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Said resolution is hereby approved by this council. Next item?
Next item is proposed resolution number 18-114-2025 authored by Honorable Harold A. Montez.
Okay, Honorable Harold Montez, you are recognized for your resolution.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, I have here proposed resolution number 18-114-2025 authored and sponsored by this representation. A resolution confirming the validity of a municipal ordinance number 01-A Series of 2025 of the Municipality of Karaga, Dava Oriental, entitled "An Ordinance Creating Two Additional Plantilia Positions" of the Municipal Government of Karaga, Dava Oriental, under the Office of the Municipal Accountant, defining its qualification standards, determining their duties and functions, and providing funds thereof, considering- Considering that the same is in accordance with the law." Madam Chair, I move for the proposal of this proposed resolution.
There is a motion for the passage of resolution number eighteen dash one-one-four dash twenty-two-five on motion of Honorable Harold Montes, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Said resolution is hereby approved by this council. Next item.
Next item, under unassigned business, the concern of Honorable Ravelo, pertaining to communications eighteen dash one-two-three, one-two-five, one-two-six, one-two-seven, all series of two thousand twenty-five for the committee of the whole report number eighteen dash six-five dash two thousand twenty-five.
Yes. Honorable Ravelo. Oh, before we proceed with Honorable Ravelo, may we request Honorable Makira for the suspension of the House rules and the conversion of the body into a committee as a whole.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I move that the body be converted as a whole and that we suspend the rules.
Okay, there was a motion for the conversion of this body into a committee as a whole and the suspension of the House rules on motion of Honorable Makira, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. We are now a committee as a whole. Honorable Ravelo, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. The Honorable Vice-Governor Glenda Rabatgaita, our Honorable Secretary, my dear colleagues, our, all other guests, our resourced persons from the executive departments, staff, good afternoon. I have here, we are in receipt of communications number one-two-five, one-two-six, and one-two-seven, an urgent request coming from the Honorable Governor Nelson El Dayangirang with regards to the supplemental budget number one. So, we have here findings and observations, communications number eighteen dash one-two-three dash twenty-two-five, request for the passage of a resolution and appropriation ordinance for supplemental budget one, fiscal year two thousand twenty-five for the funding of various programs, projects, activities to be taken from various fund sources involving the total amount of four hundred seventy-eight million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred seventy point sixty-one. Communications number eighteen dash one-two-five dash twenty-two-five, request for approval of the PDCX Commerce Resolution Number Ten, Series of two thousand twenty-five. Communications number eighteen dash one-two-six dash twenty-two-five, request for approval, PDCX Commerce Resolution Number Eleven, Series of two thousand twenty-five. Communications number eighteen dash one-two-seven dash twenty-two-five, request for approval of PDCX Commerce Resolution Number Twelve, Series of two thousand twenty-five. Accordingly, the funds for this proposed supplemental budget will be sourced from the following: new revenue sources, fiscal year two thousand twenty-four revenue surplus in the amount of two hundred eighty-three million, one hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred fifty-five and sixty-seven cents; and B, reversions of the following: actual salary savings, capital outlay of the Vice-Governor's Office, twenty percent LGDF, five percent LDRMF, and other locally funded, a total of one hundred ninety-five million, five hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred fourteen point ninety-four cents. And this, after your careful review, and for this, we are, this committee would like to recommend for the passage of resolutions confirming approval of PDCX Commerce Resolutions Number Ten, Eleven, and Twelve, all series of two thousand twenty-five, passage of an ordinance authorizing the reversion of funds to the appropriated balances of the calendar year two thousand twenty-five general fund in the total amount of one hundred ninety-five, five hundred seventy-four, four hundred fourteen point ninety-four; and passage of a corresponding appropriation ordinance and resolution authorizing the enactment of supplemental budget number one, two thousand twenty-five, to fund various priority programs, projects, activities of the Provincial Government of Dava Oriental involving the total amount of four hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred seventy-eight million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred seventy and sixty-one cents. Honorable Presiding, honorable colleagues, if there's no questions coming from the members of this August body, I move for the adoption of the said committee of the whole report, eighteen dash sixty-five dash two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, there, I believe all members were furnished copies of the committee report, committee of the whole report, eighteen dash sixty-five dash two thousand twenty-five. There is already a motion for the adoption of the said committee report on motion of Honorable Rochi Ravelo, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. And do we have other measures certified urgent? The communication number one thirty, one-three-one, Committee on Honorable Palmahill, for the, yes. Okay, a few minutes recess. There is a request for a few minutes recess by Honorable Ravelo. There's no objection, few minutes recess is declared. Now recognize Honorable Elijah Palmahill for the next, for, that's for communication eighteen dash one-three-one dash two thousand twenty-five. Also certified urgent by the Provincial Governor.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Consider that this particular communication is duly certified urgent by the Honorable Governor. This with regards to the communication number eighteen dash one-three-one dash two thousand twenty-five, referred to the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources, as requested by this representation for it to be discussed by this August body as a committee of the whole. The subject communication pertains to the urgent request of the Honorable Governor to this August body for the passage of a resolution authorizing the undersigned to enter into a memorandum of cooperation for and in behalf of the Province of Dava Oriental for the Corridor Alliance Advisory Committee in the Eastern Mindanao Biodiversity Corridor relative to the implementation of the integrated approach in the management of major biodiversity corridor in the Philippines, funded by the Global Environment Facilities, United Nations Development Program. I believe everyone has a copy of this committee of the whole report, eighteen dash sixty-seven?
Seven.
Sixty-seven dash two thousand twenty-five. If there are no questions, I would like to move for the passage of this committee.
Are there any questions, clarifications with regard to the said communication? If none, you may proceed with the motion for the adoption of the committee as a whole report number sixty-seven.
I now move for the adoption of the eighteen dash sixty-seven?
Sixty-seven dash twenty-two-five.
I do so move, Honorable.
There was a motion for the adoption of the committee as a whole report, number eighteen dash sixty-seven dash two thousand twenty-five, on motion of Honorable Elijah Palmahill, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Said committee report is hereby adopted. Yes, Honorable Harold Montes, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here a committee of the whole report number sixty-eight, series of two thousand twenty-five. This is an urgent matter with regards to the Committee on Education. It is a request from the Office of the Honorable Governor for the passage of omnibus resolution authorizing the undersigned to enter into a memorandum of agreement for and behalf of the Province of Dava Oriental with the Department of Education, specifically its division in Dava Oriental, the City of Mati, and the Regional Office Eleven. The purpose of this resolution is to formalize the Provincial Government's commitment to extend financial and logistical support for the successful implementation of DEEP-Ed's programs, projects, and activities. These omnibus resolutions will cover all future engagement with DEEP-Ed, thereby eliminating the need for separate resolutions from the Sanggonyang Panlalawigan for each activity. Madam Chair, if there is no other question, I would like to move for the adoption of this committee report, committee of the whole report number eighteen dash sixty-eight, series of two thousand twenty-five, I so move.
There is a motion for the adoption of committee as a whole report, number eighteen dash sixty-eight dash two thousand twenty-five, on motion of Honorable Harold Montes, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Said committee as a whole report is hereby adopted by this council. Do we have other measures? Honorable Ravelo? Ah, propose, okay. So, may we request Honorable Makira for the conversion of the body back to plenary and the de-palifting, no? Okay, conversion of the body.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I move that we convert the body into a plenary.
There was a motion for the conversion of this committee as a whole back to plenary on motion of Honorable Makira, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. What is the first resolution for passage?
Resolution is, proposed resolution number eighteen dash one oh five dash two thousand twenty-five.
One oh six? One oh five?
Yes, eighteen, one oh six, one oh seven, one oh, one oh, zero eight, and one zero nine, all series of two thousand twenty-five, authored by Honorable Rochi Ravelo.
Honorable Ravelo, the output of committee as a whole report, number eighteen dash sixty-five dash two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Thank you, honorable colleagues. I have here proposed resolutions number eighteen dash one zero-six dash two thousand twenty-five, a resolution confirming the approval on the passage of PDCX Commerce Resolution Number Ten, Series of two thousand twenty-five, entitled "A Resolution Affirming the Local Finance Committee, LFC Resolution Number Zero-Zero-Two, Series of two thousand twenty-five", entitled "A Resolution Recommending to the Honorable Governor Nelson El Dayangirang, Chairperson of the Provincial Development Council for the Reversion or Alignment of the Total Amount of one hundred two million, four hundred eleven thousand, two hundred ninety-seven pesos and fifty centavos from twenty percent Local Government Development Fund, LGDF, Continuing Appropriations of Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four and Current Appropriations of Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-five to fund various projects of the current year, considering that the same is in accordance with law. And proposed resolutions number eighteen dash one oh seven dash two thousand twenty-five, a resolution confirming the approval of the passage of PDCX Commerce Resolution Number Eleven, Series of two thousand twenty-five, entitled "A Resolution Confirming the Approval of the Provincial Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council Resolution Number Four, Series of two thousand twenty-five", entitled "A Resolution Approving the Calendar Year two thousand twenty-five, Dava Oriental Revised Local Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund Investment Plan, LDRRM-FIP", with the total amount of forty-one million, four hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighteen pesos and seventy-one centavos sourced out from various DRRM-related funds to support various disaster risk reduction and management programs, projects, and activities, PPAs of the Province of Dava Oriental, and endorsing the same to the Provincial Development Council for their appropriate action, considering that the same is in accordance with law. And proposed resolutions number eighteen dash one zero-eight dash two thousand twenty-five, a resolution confirming the approval on the passage of PDCX Commerce Resolution Number Twelve, Series of two thousand twenty-five, entitled "A Resolution Approving the Calendar Year two thousand twenty-five Supplemental Annual Investment Program, SAEP One, in the Total Amount of four hundred seventy-one million, one hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred seventy pesos and sixty-one centavos, as program endorsing the same to the Sanggonyang Panlalawigan, SP, this Province for its appropriate action, considering that the same is in accordance with law." Honorable Presiding Officer, honorable colleagues, I have, I move for the passage and approval under omnibus motion, proposed resolutions number eighteen, one zero-six, twenty-two-five, one zero-seven, twenty-two-five, and one zero-eight, twenty-two-five, I so move.
There was a motion for the passage of resolutions eighteen dash one zero-six, one zero-seven, one zero-eight, and one zero-nine, all series of two thousand twenty-five, on motion of Honorable Rochi Ravelo, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Honorable Ravelo, for the appropriation ordinance.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here proposed appropriation ordinance number eighteen, zero-two, twenty-two-five, an appropriation ordinance appropriating the total amount of four hundred seventy-eight million, one hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred seventy pesos and sixty-one centavos, as embodied in the supplemental budget one of the Province of Dava Oriental for a fiscal year two thousand twenty-five to fund various priority programs, projects, activities of the Provincial Government. Now, therefore, with the following appropriations as cited, Honorable Presiding Officer, I move to dispense with the reading of the whole content of this proposed provincial, proposed appropriation ordinance, eighteen, zero-two, twenty-two-five, and immediately move for its approval on first reading, I so move.
There is a motion for the passage of appropriation ordinance number eighteen, zero-two, twenty-two-five for, for, for second reading on motion of Honorable, first reading? Second reading, for second reading on motion of Honorable Rochi Ravelo, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. You may proceed.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Also here, a proposed provincial ordinance number eighteen, zero-five, twenty-two-five, a resolution reverting to the unappropriated balances of the calendar year two thousand twenty-five general fund appropriations from savings, from salaries, and other compensations of various offices, capital outlay of the Vice-Governor's Office, twenty percent, and twenty percent Local Government Development Fund, continuing appropriations fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, and current appropriations fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, five percent local disaster risk reduction management fund, continuing appropriations fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-three, and current appropriations fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, five percent LDRM trust fund and other locally funded PPAs, and authorizing its corresponding appropriations to fund various priority projects, programs, activities of the province. Honorable Presiding Officer, since all members of this August body has a copy of this proposed provincial ordinance, I move to dispense with the reading of the whole content of this proposed provincial ordinance and subsequently move for its approval, I so move.
Okay, there was a motion for the passage for second reading, provincial ordinance number eighteen, zero-five, twenty-two-five, on motion of Honorable Rochi Ravelo, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, non-noted, motion is carried. Provincial ordinance number 18-05-2025 is hereby approved by this council. So...
If, uh, if the Committee on Rules would allow, I would like to request that this, uh, proposed provincial ordinance, number 18-05 and 18-02, be read under its third and final reading.
If there's no objection from the members, Honorable Roche Ravelo has requested that since we are under suspended House rules, if we may pass the said provincial ordinance and appropriation ordinance for third and final reading in today's session. So there's no objection, you may proceed.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. So, uh, again, I move for the approval of the provincial ordinance number 18-05-2025 on third and final reading as read, "A Resolution Reverting to the Unappropriated Balances of the Calendar Year 2025 General Fund, The Appropriations from Savings, Savings from Salaries and Other Compensations, and the Rest." And, uh... And, uh, various offices, capital outlay of the Vice Governor's Office, 20% Local Government Development Funds, continuing appropriations under the 5% LDRMM Fund, continuing appropriations, uh, from the 20% Development Fund 2022 and 2023, and authorizing its corresponding appropriations to fund various priority programs, projects, activities of this province. I move for the approval of this ordinance, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Okay, there was a motion for the passage for third and final reading, provincial ordinance number 18-05-2025, on motion of Honorable, uh, Roche Ravelo. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Uh, Mrs. Secretary, please proceed with the count.
Uh, Honorable, uh, all, all members...
Where is the count?
One, two, three, four. All, uh, members have unanimously voted in favor of the proposed provincial ordinance number 18-05-2025.
So provincial ordinance number 18-05-2025 is now approved for third and final reading. You may proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I am, I have here with me appropriation ordinance number 18-02-2025 on third and final reading, an ordinance appropriating the total amount of 478,136,370 pesos and 61 centavos as embedded in the supplemental budget 1 of the Province of Dava Oriental for fiscal year 2025 to fund various priority programs, projects, activities of the Provincial Government. I move for the approval of this said appropriation ordinance number 18-02-2025, I so move.
Okay, there was a motion for the passage for third and final reading, appropriation ordinance number 18-02-2025, on motion of Honorable Roche Ravelo. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Mrs. Secretary, proceed with the count.
Okay, Honorable, all members, all SP members present have unanimously voted in favor of AO number 18-02-2025.
Appropriation ordinance number 18-02-2025 is now approved for third and final reading. Next. Okay. Uh, what is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Next item is proposed resolution number 18-110-2025, authored by Honorable Elijah Palma Hill.
Honorable Elijah Palma Hill, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here, I have here proposed resolution number 18-110-2025, a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor Nelson Boydeng, Nelson Eldeyangirang, for and in behalf of the Provincial Government of Dava Oriental to enter into a memorandum of cooperation for the Corridor Alliance Advisory Committee in the Eastern Mindanao Biodiversity Corridor relative to the implementation to the integrated approach in the management of major biodiversity corridor in the Philippines, funded by the Global Environment Facility United Nations Development Program. Uh, this representation, Honorable Presiding Officer, moves for the passage and approval of proposed resolution number 18-110-2025, I do so move, Honorable Presiding Officer.
There is a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-110-2025, on motion of Honorable Elijah Palma Hill, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, none noted, motion is carried. Proposed resolution 18-110-2025 is hereby approved by this council. Next item.
Next item is proposed resolution number 18-111-2025, authored by Honorable Harold A. Montez.
Honorable Harold Montez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here proposed resolution number 18-111-2025, a resolution authorizing the Provincial Governor, Honorable Nelson Eldeyangirang, for and behalf of the Provincial Government of Dava Oriental to enter into memorandum of agreement between and among the Department of Education, Regional Office 11, Division of Dava Oriental, and Division of City of Mati to formalize the Provincial Government commitment to extend financial and logistical support for the successful implementation of DEEP Ed's programs, projects, and activities. Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the proposed resolution number 18-111-2025.
There was a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-111-2025, on motion of Honorable Harold Montez, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, none noted, motion is carried. Resolution number 18-111-2025 is hereby approved by this council. Yes, Honorable, Honorable Roche Ravelo. Okay, few minutes recess is declared.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here, uh, under the committee of Honorable Johnson Michael Deyangirang, since he's not around, I was authorized to, uh, have this proposed resolution number 18-99-2025, a resolution commending Lieutenant Colonel Edwin L. Piaz, Euro-13555, 13 Infantry General Staff Corps Philippine Army for his eminently meritorious and valuable services rendered as commanding officer of the 67th Infantry Agila Battalion, 10th Infantry Agila Division Philippine Army from September 4, 2023 to 14 of September 2025, achieving remarkable accomplishments in operational intelligence and civil military undertakings in the Province of Dava Oriental. I move to dispense with the reading of the whole content of this proposed resolutions number 18-99-2025, and subsequently move for its approval, and, Honorable Presiding Officer, I so move.
Okay, there was a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-99-2025, on motion of Honorable Roche Ravelo, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, none noted, motion is carried. Said resolution is hereby approved by this council. Next item, do we have other items for discussion? Under unassigned business, none? So may we request, uh, Honorable Lady Makira for the, uh, motion for the lifting of the suspension of the House rules.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to lift the suspension of the House rules.
Okay, there was a motion for the lifting of the suspension of the House rules, on motion of Honorable Makira, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, none noted, motion is carried. We have now lifted the suspended House rules, uh, what is the next item?
Our next item is other matters.
Other matters. We are still under other matters. Yes, Honorable Inzaghi, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all. The, may I call the members of the Committee on Cooperative? That we have a committee meeting right after the session. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, please take note, Vice Chair and members of the Committee on Cooperative and Livelihood, you will have a meeting after session. Yes, Honorable Harold Montez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I would like to request the members of the Committee on Education, as well as the Committee on Labor, that we will have a committee meeting right after the regular session with regards to the referred communication, thank you.
Okay, please take note, Vice Chair and members of the Committee on Education and Committee on Labor and Employment, there will be a meeting after this regular session. Yes, Honorable Roche Ravelo.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I'd like to request the honorable members of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, as well as the committee members of the Committee on Trade and Industry, that will have a committee meeting immediately after the session, thank you.
Okay, again, please take note, all members and Vice Chair of the Committee on Finance, Budget, Appropriation, Ways and Means, and the Committee on Trade, Commerce, and Industry, please, there will be a meeting after this regular session. Yes, Honorable John Irwin Montoho, to be followed by Honorable, um, Ana Cheryl Castro.
Yeah, I would like to request the members of the Committee on Health and Sanitation to please, uh, remain after the session for a, uh, short, uh, meeting.
Okay, please take note, members of the Committee on Health and Sanitation, uh, meeting after this regular session. Uh, Honorable Castro to be followed later by Honorable Diana.
Uh, I'd like to ask you, Madam Presiding, regarding our, um, lobbying with the Provincial Tourism Council and the SP. When would that be, ma'am? When will be our, the, the schedule of, uh, to lobby with the, uh, Tourism, Provincial Tourism Council for, in, to update our tourism code?
Okay. Okay. So perhaps we just finished the celebration, the World Teachers' Day celebration this week, and by next week probably we can schedule a meeting to sit down with the Tourism, um, I think the Attorney Lovella Takder, yes, to discuss, uh, the tourism code.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes, Honorable Diana.
Thank you, Madam Honorable Presiding Officer. Just to manifest that the Committee on Public Information, Communication, and Technology and Media Affairs will have a meeting to tackle the communication number 18-118-2025, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, please take note, member on, um, uh, was that, uh, information, techno, communication?
Yes, Madam.
The committee. Please take note, there will be a meeting after this regular session.
Yes, thank you.
So, so are there any other members? We are still under other matters. If none, what is the next item? Oh, yes, sorry, Honorable Uwe.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. With the passing of our colleague from the Sangguniang Panglungsood of the Municipality of Panay Banay last September 22, 2025, the late Councillor, Honorable President Gil Ladra, if it's amenable to the members of this August body, Madam Presiding Officer, this representation would like to pass a resolution subject to style, a resolution entitled, "Expressing Deepest Sympathy and Condolences to the Believed Family of the Late Councillor President Gil Ladra of the Municipality of Panay Banay, Province of Dava Oriental, Who Joined Our Creator Last September 22, 2025." If it's amenable to all members of this August body, Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the passage of the said resolution.
Uh, we, uh, yes, we are still under other matters, so there is a motion presented by Honorable Uwe for the passage of a resolution of condolence to Municipal Councillor, the late Municipal Councillor Ladra of the Municipality of Panay Banay. Uh, any second to the motion? Uh, is it right to pass it under other matters, right?
If it's amenable to all members of this August body, Madam.
Okay, so we don't need to suspend the House rules, okay? There is a motion presented, seconded by all members of the, of this August body, um... There's a motion presented, seconded by all members of the body. Uh, said resolution subject to style is now approved by this council.
One more, Madam Presiding Officer.
Yes, you may proceed.
Since I can't go through the different activities of the World Teachers' Day Celebration, Madam Presiding Officer, as advised by my doctor, I would like to grab this opportu, opportunity to express my greetings to all teachers, particularly to the DEEP Ed family of the Province of Dava Oriental, as well as to the City Division personnel of the Department of Education for the dedication to the strengthening the foundation of our generation and to the future ones. Happy, happy World Teachers' Day Celebration.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Uwe. Uh, are there, we are still under other matters. If we are through with other matters, what is the next item?
Our next item is adjournment.
Adjournment. May we request Honorable Makira for the adjournment of this regular... Yes, Honorable Castro.
Uh, Madam Presiding, since we have no more, uh, order of business to be discussed, I move for the adjournment of the regular session.
Okay, there was, there was a motion for the adjournment of this regular session until next Wednesday? Yes?
Before we adjourn, I forgot to greet your birthday boy yesterday, the birthday of board member Dunggo Montoho. Boss, belated happy birthday.
Yes, and belated happy birthday to both Honorable Ana Cheryl Castro and board John Irwin Montoho. So, there was already a motion for adjournment until next Wednesday of this regular session. Uh, motion of Honorable Ana Cheryl Castro, seconded by all present. Any objections, discussions, none noted, motion is carried, session is adjourned.